Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd ask this time, would you please turn any mobile devices to off so that they do not interrupt the proceedings of this meeting? You would please turn all your mobile devices to off so they don't interrupt the proceedings of this meeting.
At this time, I'm going to dispense with the reading of how to participate in public
meetings, the policies and procedures. If you'd like a copy of those procedures, they are at the front door coming into the room. Please take a copy. Makes for great reading. This time, I would ask if this board has had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous session of this body? Is there any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion regarding the minutes from the previous session of this body.
A motion to have the minutes be approved?
I have a motion for Ms. Battle to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Leggett. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. I would remind everyone that this is a recommending body. We will hear each case that comes before us, and at the conclusion, we will render a recommendation that will be forwarded to, in these cases, the Board of Commissioners this evening at 7:00, where they will make the final decision on the application. Each side will be presented an opportunity to speak. Fifteen minutes for those that wish to speak on behalf, that includes the applicant. And fifteen minutes for those that may have questions, comments, or concerns, or want to speak in opposition to the application. The speaker may use all of those fifteen minutes, or may reserve time. The applicant will initial the fifteen minutes. They will be able to speak. They can reserve some of their time for rebuttal at the end of the speaking portion. Those wanting to speak against, or may have questions, comments, or concerns, it's fifteen minutes. If you get one person up here that occupies the entire fifteen minutes, that's it. So, those that are going to be asked to speak, or wish to speak, will come up, sign in, state your name, and will address your comments to the chair, which is myself. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, again, you will address those to me. We will probably take down that information, and we may come back and pull the applicant back up to address some of those questions. Questions from the Planning Commission, or from the Board of Commissioners, do not count against either side's time. At this time, Mr. Robinson, if you would introduce the first application.
Good afternoon. First application, 2018-02-SUP. It's application by Kimberly Swords for a special use permit for a family personal care home for elderly on approximately three acres. Our property is located in Land Lot 566, District 1, Section 3, on the west side of Sweetwater Church Road, east of Baker's Bridge Road. Address is 2042 Sweetwater Church Road, and it's in Commission Post 3. Staff has noted no cause or concerns or opposition, and staff has recommended six printed stipulations if this is -- application is approved, and the applicant is present.
If the applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and then address your comments to the chair.
Okay, my name is Kimberly Swords, and I am looking to turn this property into a personal care home right now, and we'd like to do it as soon as possible.
Are you -- is that the extent of your presentation? I don't want to interrupt you.
Do what now?
Are you done with your presentation?
I don't know what I'm doing.
That's all right. That's all right. That's quite all right. I do want to ask, are you familiar with the six listed stipulations that staff has recommended?
Yes.
And you're agreeable to those?
Yes.
All right. Well, you have quite a few minutes remaining, so...
Okay.
Is there any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Ms. Sword, do you, the proximity of Sweetwater Church Road, which is one of the busiest roads in the south end of the county, are you willing to fence that property?
Yes, we are. Yes.
Because I know... What type of patients are you going to have there? Are there going to be medical issue patients?
It's going to be all types, but we're mostly focusing on Alzheimer's and dementia.
Okay.
So, we will have locked doors, and we will have gates.
That's one of my concerns, because I've, in the past, have had to go out and hunt Alzheimer's patients that have walked away from a home similar to this. And, like I said, Sweetwater Church Road and Baker's Bridge Road are both very busy roads, and the possibility of them being injured or killed in that location is high probability if they get out in the road.
Yeah, I've got somebody already that has come out and given me a quote on how big I, you know, the size that I want and where I want it. So, it's going to happen.
Okay. Are you going to be doing the... What age people are you talking about?
Well, it'll be like from 55, 65, on up.
Okay. Are they local to the neighborhood?
Yes, they are local.
And are you willing to sprinkle the house? Because I know a lot in that age group are smokers, and probability of fire is a lot greater in a house like this.
Yeah. I've actually worked in assisted living. I've been working with seniors for 35 years. I was just in a local assisted living where the residents over there were being abused. And when I reported that abuse, I ended up losing my job. So, one of my residents that was there, that I was taking care of, his family is the one that asked me if, you know, I wanted to take this on, because it's something I've always wanted to do. So, it's actually his home that we're turning into a personal care home.
So, you're going to be... You will be owning the residence?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Is there any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Swords. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak against this application, or may have questions, comments, At this time, I will close that portion of the hearing, and I would ask the Planning Commission for a motion regarding application 2018-02-SUP.
I have a motion denying the application.
I have a motion to deny by Mr. Leggett. Is there a second? Call one more time. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. And now, I'd ask, is there another motion with regard to this application?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is that with the six listed stipulations?
Yes.
From Mr. Lowe. Is there a second?
I second.
I have a second from Ms. Battle. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes three, one, and one. Again, this is a recommending body, Ms. Swords. This will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight for their consideration. You have to be present as the applicant for it to be considered. Thank you.
Next application, 2018-07-Z. Application by Wintergreen Development LLC to rezonate approximately 30.392 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to R55 Active Adult Residential Zoning District for an age-restricted subdivision development containing approximately 102 detached home sites. Property is located in Land Lots 387, 388, 389, District 2, Section 3, northwest side of Charles Hardy Parkway, which is also known as State Route 120, on the east side of Bobo Road. It's in Commission Post 1. Staff has not received any concern or opposition on this one. We had one person come in with questions, and staff has recommended approval with 18 printed stipulations.
Applicant or his agent is present, right? If you'll please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the
Good afternoon. My name is Joel Larkin, and I'm with the law firm Sams Larkin Huffin Valley in Marietta, Georgia. And I'm pleased to be here today on behalf of the applicant, Wintergreen Development. This applicant is an affiliated entity with Windsong Development, and you've met Steve Rowmine and Mr. Smith in the back here. They were two of the individuals that consulted with the county in preparing the new R55 ordinance. So, you've had an opportunity to see some of their product at that time. I've brought to you today some pictures that... These are actual things that they've developed in Cobb or Cherokee. They've also were the developers of the first senior product in the Seven Hills Development. And if I can give you their endorsement, my mother-in-law purchased they about 12 years ago, and she still allows me to hang out with them. So, that should tell you something about them. This is an approximately 30-acre tract. It's located immediately across Dallas Highway from the Woodstock Furniture Outlet. If you look at that drawing, the site plan that's up there, they don't have all of the frontage. There's a big triangular portion that's cut out, and that's located at the light by Woodstock Furniture Outlet. That property is actually in the city of Hiram, and I believe it's zone commercial. I'm not certain about that. But that's actually in the city of Hiram. That frontage also, unfortunately, has some pretty severe topo on it as far as future development. At that light, I would guess it's up about 20 feet above road grade. And then, the wise utility companies, for some reason, when they came through years ago and built those great big giant concrete monument towers, they put one right in the middle of the intersection. So, in order for someone to develop there, they're probably going to have to bear a considerable expense to cut that area down and move at least two towers. And I don't have actual estimates, but I've heard it could be as much as a quarter million dollars per tower. So, you know, addressing the property from that location is probably not feasible. If you look on the site plan, the property also has a blue line running through the middle and a beautiful lake. So, you know, the issues that you have along the frontage and the lake, among other things, I think, make this more suitable for residential development than any other type of development. It is in the county's future land use plan for residential development, and the proposed R55 classification that you just adopted is one of the classifications that's deemed suitable for this site. My client has developed thousands of units similar to the ones that you're looking at. They're one of the premier developers of this type of senior product, I think, in this part of Georgia. What we propose is products similar to that. We haven't engineered the site yet, so we don't have, you know, we can't give you the exact product and layout yet, but the site plan that you're looking at, along Bobo Road, we're showing some rear entry product facing Bobo Road along this area. And I believe there's a little more rear entry internally. We're fortunate to have staff's recommendation for approval on this. They have come up with a number of proposed stipulations that were sent to us on Friday, and we have looked them over, and we are agreeable to a large number of them. Conditions three through six are a group of proposed stipulations that relate to traffic issues. And number three starts with it, we need to get with staff during the design review process and agree upon the location of the entrance, and that is the law, and that's what we would normally be required to do. Condition six requests donation of 10-foot of right-of-way. So, we propose that conditions three and six be left in. Conditions four and five relate to details that, at this point in time, it's premature, we think, to talk about them. So, the way the preliminary review works, I think we need to sit down with staff, with our traffic engineer, and locate the entrance, and then discuss with them what kind of improvements may need to be made to that area. The balance of the conditions are agreeable to the applicant, and we're prepared to respond to any questions that you have, and I would like to reserve any remaining time I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Larkin. The interior to the subdivision, are all those streets proposed to be private easement, or are they going to be public access?
Those are public streets.
Everything except for the alleys.
Except for the alleys, yes.
And because my eyesight is not what it was when I was 12, is that 60-foot right-of-way on there, or 50-foot right-of-way? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not proposing any variances from the applicable requirements.
I just want to make sure that I'm...
It's a conceptual site plan.
Yeah. And again, I didn't see the large printout version of the plan, so I just wanted to clarify that for myself, to my own justification. If you can bear with me for a moment, Mr. Jones, can you address whether or not... He has a question regarding stipulations four or five, wanting to leave those out of the stipulations for this zoning application. My question is, are those two stipulations that would be typically addressed in the plan review session, or is that something that is critical to the county to have?
Jody, I think we can take care of number four in plan review. It's actually specified in the Development Regulations under Section 5.15.9, that right and left turn lanes are required at intersections with county arterials, which Bobo Road is.
And with regard to stipulation number five?
I think we can probably take it out of this.
So, four is required by Development Regulations?
Not on that one.
Okay, five is.
Five is.
Wow. And then, your recommendation on stipulation four is?
That one's covered by the Development Regulations, number four.
So, that's no problem to the DOT as far as removing both of them?
I think we ought to listen to public hearing and see if there are some other traffic concerns.
Okay.
Which is something that we proposed as an idea to address some traffic that may be out there.
We will revisit that subject in a little bit. And you're agreeable to all the remaining stipulations outside of those two?
We are. And we're not... I mean, we expect that when we sit down and design the intersection with them, that there'll be discussion about what improvements need to be made. We just don't know what they are right now.
All right. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Mr. Larkin, would the developer be amenable to providing a second entrance and exit, even if it's a left-in, I mean, right-in, left-out on Highway 120? Do you... You're talking about 200 cars or more into that one-little intersection that already has a huge amount of traffic on Bobo Road in the evening. Sometimes it packs a faraway to the four-way stop. Would that be an issue that they would be okay with somewhere along 120?
We would expect that that would be something that would be discussed with staff during plan review. I'm not sure if we could get it on 120, even if we wanted it, but we certainly, you know, as we design the site, there's a lot of engineering with that lake and with the topography out there.
But that wouldn't be around the lake. That would be around... Somewhere in the lot between... I'm like you, I can't see the thing, Jody.
I assume you're talking about up in here.
Where your finger is, right there is where I think you were pointing at.
This is where the property is really high.
But you're talking about concerns, if you've got, here at Bobo Road, over 200 cars, and then the regular traffic goes to there, and if there's an accident in that intersection or somewhere nearby that completely stops the road, then you need a secondary access or at least fire and emergency people to get in and out of. You're going to have a lot of people trapped in there if something like that happened.
We certainly intend to look at that, and there's another possibility, which might even be an emergency access out through that other triangle once it's developed. But right now, we haven't engineered the site, so I'm not trying to dodge it. Have you got a...
There's also an issue with the...
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, I'm Albert Smith. I'm with One Song Properties in Wintergreen Development. There's also an issue along 120 with the road grade, as Joel stated earlier. Also, there's a number of power poles right there. We actually have gotten estimates, and it was $249,000 to move a pole. At that point, it just... It becomes not feasible. As far as going further, we were trying at the light. As far as going north further, I guess that's east.
You're talking up here?
Yes, up there. We can look at it with our engineers. Anything's possible. I just didn't think they'd be able to get a curb cut that close to the intersection from the state for the highway. But if it's possible, we'd definitely look at it.
Would you consider that?
Yeah, I like the idea of having two entrances for...
We'll certainly commit to make a yeoman's effort to get it, because it would be beneficial to the subdivision.
Oh, absolutely. It'd be a... To me, it's a safety issue to be able to get someone in and someone out, if we need to. Like I said, with that whole area, as heavily congested as it is, that's a major concern.
Understood.
But otherwise, I like what you've done on your plan.
Well, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Board of Commissioners? Mr. Davis?
Sorry, I had a little difficulty hearing Mr. Jones. Did we say that the stipulations four and five are covered in the Development Regulations? Is that...
I'll allow you to clarify.
Yeah, could you clarify that, George?
Right. Four is covered in the Development Regulations, five is not.
So, what was the recommendation that you had on stipulation five?
Wait till after for public discussion.
Take public input and see if there are any other concerns regarding traffic, and then make a determination at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Board of Commissioners to the applicant? Any questions for staff, if you'd like to engage there? All right. Thank you, Mr. Larkin. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is that a yes or a no? No. Okay, that's all right. Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to this application, or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come around, sign in. Come to the podium, sir. If you would please sign in and state your name, and then address your comments to me. Just round there.
Name's Herbert McAfee, and I own the property on the backside of that development that you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to know how close they're going to get on top of me.
How close?
Yeah. I live on the Wheeler School Road side, right there at the creek, coming from the creek going up.
Chris, could you help him locate his property on that site map?
My property starts at the creek, comes up.
And you're agreeable that the line directly south of that circle he just drew is the property line, your property lines?
Yeah. It has to come all the way to the creek, from creek going up.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, right here. All right. Here's the creek.
Yeah, you see that triangle right...
Yeah.
I mean...
Right.
Yeah, the triangle would be...
We'll put it right there.
Yeah, it starts from creek all the way up to the angle.
There's the creek and the curve.
Yeah.
And because this is a relatively new zoning code, R55, what is the setback in the buffers?
The setback, the minimal setback is 15 feet, and they are showing a proposed 25 feet on that side.
All right. And is there a non-disturbance buffer that they have to abide by?
That would be an undisturbed buffer.
That would be the 25 feet?
That is what is being shown on the site plan. They would have to agree to 25. The minimal is 15.
Okay. So, at most, at this point, Mr. McAfee, they can come within 15 feet of the property line that divides them from private property directly north of them?
They may have to, if only, if they could fence it down through there, where they can't just be in and out like the drain sensor station does. That's what they usually are.
To fence it along the property line?
Pardon?
You said to fence it along the property line?
Yeah.
That could be something that they cover in plan review, but that would be in violation of the non-disturbance buffer, wouldn't it?
That could be something we could handle in plan review. The main thing, the buffers provide screening, and they are alternatives where, in some cases, a fence and...
A fence.
Fence, in addition to buffers, would work.
Okay.
See, the road don't go all the way down to creek. It stops at 90 yards. Because I, when I bought the land and everything, I made the road down through there, and DNR did what I made to the county.
Is that...
That was all wood.
That's all your... Is that the extent of your comments, or do you have more that you're wanting to ask?
I didn't hear what you said.
He said there was more questions, basically, or comments.
No, this is... Basically, what I want, like, say, fence it, and there's a ditch that's always went down through there for water drainage, and it goes down and dumps into the creek. But it's grew over right now. So, I hadn't been able to get nobody to come in and clean it up, because nobody knows who had to pop it at some time.
Well, they will have to address the stormwater requirements in plan review, and that is a county requirement as far as development. So, they do have to take care of stormwater flow. That's not something that we preside over, but the county, as an administrative body, will during the development plan review sessions. So, they will look at that. Even without a comment from the local property owners, they still have to look at that.
Mr. McAfee, is your property on top of the hill over there that overlooks this property?
No.
If I remember right, there's... It goes down to the creek, and then it goes back up.
Well, when it gets to the creek and goes back up, that goes with the... They developed a bunch of apartments over there, and that's on the... Used to be Judeine Drive. a bunch of apartments over there, and that's on the, used to be Judeine and Dragons property. And that got sold and they built a bunch of apartments over there. But the creek, everything from Macklin all the way back over to 120.
It's right here.
Yeah, that's the creek, you showed me.
All right.
We'd love to just come in and take the whole Wheeler School property.
Is, okay, are we, is that any more questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McAfee.
No, I think y'all very good.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition or has questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Was that a hand raised in the back of the room? All right, at this time, I would ask Mr. Larkin or Mr. Smith to come back around. Obviously, you heard the conversation, there's some concern as far as being able to keep continuity of the property line. Is there any objection as far as placing a fence or making sure the planted buffer is?
I have, I have to look at the engineering, look at fences. Buffers, the 25-foot would be acceptable to us, and the, we always tend to plant the back of all of our developments, and I can show that at the plan review. We spend a lot of time making sure that not only our neighbors are private, but our homeowners are private to the neighbors, so I'm not, so we typically spend a good bit of time with our neighbors trying to make sure that, that we impact them as good as possible. And I will look at it. I'll look at a fence, I'm not unagreeable to it, I'm not sure that I want to agree to fencing the entire property line, but-
Well, I would encourage you then to, you've met Mr. McAfee at least in the course of this meeting, to speak with him afterward.
Absolutely.
And maybe y'all can come to an agreeable decision.
Yeah, we'll look at augmenting that buffer, and we'll speak with him and figure out something that's mutually acceptable.
All right, well, thank you very much. Is there any other questions for the applicant, if you'll remain there for just a second? That way, we're not, you know, gonna keep pulling you back up here. Any other questions from the planning commission to the applicant? Board of Commissioners, Mr. Pannell?
You talked about, I don't even think it's on, you talked, yeah, it's, you talked about the 25-foot buffer that y'all were gonna do versus the 15-foot that you have to do.
Right.
So is that, is that something you're okay putting in the special steps?
I believe so, 25 feet on the, on the northern border.
I mean, I know that's what it says on the plan, but plans change.
Right, no, but I'm agreeable on that northern border, but-
We could, we could add that to that then, okay. That sounds great.
Mr. Pannell, are you looking at that being just along the northern border?
Wherever it is, they have it on that plan, which I believe that's it.
The only other shared property line is that creek line, so it's gonna have a built-in buffer along the creek.
Right, and then all of the land south of the pond, yeah, well, all the land south of the pond near 120, all that'll stay as natural as possible because we're not, we're not gonna get into that, into that buffer down there. So that would shield the, the car lot from having to look at us, and then the, all the frontage along Bubba Road, we really don't share any neighbors there. I think we have maybe one house, and we would definitely ensure that, we can put the 25-foot buffer around that ice as well.
Is it, is that an undisturbed buffer? We would prefer that we, in consultation with staff, be able to get in there and clean it up and supplement it.
I'm okay with whatever the planning commission wants to do at this time. If it's un, if it's undisturbed, that's, if, are you wanting to do it yourself?
I'd love to be able to do a mix of both.
Okay. I would think if you're gonna do the job I think you're gonna do, a mix of both would be great.
So-
What's, what I don't like is, we talk about doing something yourself, and then the undisturbed buffer would have been better.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
I understand.
We're proposing we'll submit a plan after we evaluate it, first to review during
All right. Let me see if I've captured this correctly. Owner developer agrees to maintain a 25-foot planted and natural buffer along the development boundary with neighborhood residential property.
Yes.
Is that, does that capture the spirit of what you're agreeable to?
Absolutely.
All right. Is there any other questions from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Crowe?
The fence never was determined whether they would, you're gonna talk to Mr. McAfee afterwards, is that correct?
Yes, we'll see what we can work out.
All right. Any other questions? Planning Commission? Thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain a motion regarding application 2018-07-Z. Please remember, we have added a 19th stipulation. Let me go back to that, we need to revisit number four, that's correct. Mr. Jones?
Four is in the development regulations.
Number five.
Five. I'd like to discuss this with the developer afterwards, but we can take it out of the regulation, or the stipulations.
We can move forward as this is a recommending body with a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and we can leave the stipulation in and allow that discussion to take place between you and the developer prior to the meeting tonight. Or we can table it for consideration at a later date. Okay? Is that, is that agreeable to you?
That is agreeable.
Is that agreeable to you, that we would move forward with the recommendation? So, this time, I'll entertain a motion of that application with the removal of stipulation number four, and to keep this from being confusing, I'm still gonna call the last stipulation an addition, stipulation number 19. And I can give you the wording if you want to write that down, or do you already have Owner developer agrees to maintain a 25-foot planted and natural buffer along the development boundary wi, am I going too fast?
Yeah.
With neighboring residential properties.
Perfect.
And at this time, I will entertain that motion.
A motion that we approve, as you stated?
A motion that we approve from Mr. Stokes with the listed stipulations, removal of number four and addition of number 19.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Leggett, all in favor. Motion passes, four, zero, and one. Again, it's recommending body, it will go to the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight, and I encourage you to speak with Mr. Jones, the applicant needs to speak with Mr. Jones after this meeting if possible. Mr. Robinson, if you are ready.
The final application today is 2018-09Z, application by Will C. Lawrence to rezonate approximately one acre from B1 General Business District to B2 Highway Business District for commercial business operations and the parking of garbage trucks when not in use. Property is located in Land Lot 1249, District 3, Section 3. It's on the north side of Chester Harris Drive, west of Dallas-Acquibor Highway. The address is 118 Chester Harris Drive, send commission post four. Staff has received 30 to 40 phone calls and approximately, well, almost 20 emails, and it's been a mix of support and recommended opposition. Staff has recommended denial, but if the application is approved, we've recommended 12 printed stipulations. Applicant is present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My intention for this property is to, like Chris said, park some garbage trucks here, fence it in so that it's not eyesore, keep garbage cans on this lot while, you know, when I get a new load of garbage cans in or whatever, bring them in, have them here, as we get ready to take them out to new customers. There's a site, yeah. Okay, so this is a site plan. I've seen these stipulations, a lot of these stipulations are perfectly fine, I don't have any problem with them at all. Some of these stipulations were put on this land when it was zoned to B1. B1, in my understanding, is for storefront, and I don't have an intention to put any, you know, storefront here or any place for customers to come, so we don't perceive any increase in traffic whatsoever, besides just my couple of trucks coming in and out a couple times a day. The stipulations that, the only stipulations that I have an issue with at all are number eight, says to provide reports showing a thousand GPM fire flow to all fire hydrants within 300 feet of all buildings. We're, we're not planning on putting a building here, we're just putting awnings, parking spots for our trucks, and small tool shed, just to keep, you know, hand tools and air compressor and whatnot. And so we're not, those stipulations were put in with the understanding that there would be a restaurant or a store of some kind there, and hence the need for a fire hydrant. I'm not 100% against it, but I don't see a need as for, my purpose is for having a fire hydrant or any of that. Number 11, to extend a minimum of eight-inch water main along Chester Harris Road to extend through the property limits. Again, it's my understanding this is for the fire hydrant, and I don't, like I say, we don't, we're not having any buildings here. This, this seems like it's the, calling for a fire hydrant to protect the buildings, but there's not gonna be any buildings. All I wanna do is park some trucks here and put garbage cans here. So, I guess I reserve the rest of my time for questions or whatever.
If you will remain there, I will go ahead and try to address this with Mr. Vaughn regarding stipulations eight and 11, the requirements that are listed here, which is part of staff recommendations, do you have any objections with those staying or being removed?
We're recommending that they stay. We realize plans change, intentions change, so this, this would be the best opportunity to get that in.
Meaning that if there's, assuming that it is rezoned, the concern is that later development would be in place, and the opportunity to have that line extended for that very reason may escape the county.
Okay, could we maybe put a stipulation in that if we do change plans and decide to build a building at any time, that we do that at that time?
Again, we'll, I'll defer as far as that goes to the Pauling County Water Department as far as what their needs are for the development. If you're gonna put any type of a structure out there, or anything out there necessarily that could burn, that would be the question, I guess, if it's for fire flow.
That's right.
Mr. Lawrence, you've never seen a garbage truck catch on fire?
I want them home.
I understand that, but they do-
I'm sure they can, yes, yes, sir, I'm sure they can.
All right. In relation to what you, what you have presented, the property's already zoned B1, was there a site plan that was approved at that time? I don't know how long ago this may have been, Chris. Are these stipulations, as they were, in place back when it was originally rezoned?
Actually, there is a change. This was originally zoned B1 in July 2006. The water system stipulations are consistent with that zoning case. The DOT stipulations are reduced.
I'm gonna go ahead and defer to the rest of the planning commission if there are any questions for the applicant at this point.
Chris, what purpose was that property rezoned in the beginning, from residential to big one?
The original application for, in 2006, included the property here as well as this property, and those were rezoned to B1 for general business, for small retail shops. Nothing ever became, no plans were ever submitted, and I think they actually went through possibly even a foreclosure process in the late 2008, '09 range.
I just thought it odd that, kinda remote as this piece of property is off of the main road, that it would be zoned for that purpose.
Me too. I can't answer for previous-
I understand.
-Board of Commissioners.
Are there any other questions for the applicant from the rest of the planning
Do you, you're just limiting it to, what, three trucks?
That's another thing I would like to address. This stipulations here, number two, says agrees to a maximum of three garbage trucks on the site. I would like to eventually grow the business. Right now, we only have two trucks, but Pauling County needs me to grow, just to be honest with you. And I would like to have an opportunity to here to either come back and revisit this if I need a fourth truck, or allow for four trucks, and if, if I need to grow more than that, I can find another site to park on, you know, any additional trucks. I know I'm asking for a lot, but I always expect a lot from Pauling County.
You, you can be agreeable to the stipulation or object to the stipulation. You can be agreeable to it at a later date, come back and apply to amend the zoning stipulations, but that is up to you, I can't tell you what you, what you want to do.
Right. Well, I mean, I'm, I can, I'm fine with revisiting that at a later time.
I guess my question then is gonna come down to the, the nature of the business, it's sanitation, and you're right, it is a very vital part of any growing community that sanitation be handled. Curiosity, though, with the location that you're talking about here in combination with proximity to other houses, how close are you to your nearest neighboring home? I see a building here edged out, so is that-
This, this is actually a house. This piece of property is zone B2, or zone B1 as well, but, but I believe this right here is a house.
And the nature of the business also, sanitation trucks, storage of garbage carts, those types of things can present a, an odor, you know, is, what precautions do you take to make sure that that does not become an issue for the surrounding community?
Well, we empty the trucks on a daily basis, and we keep our trucks clean and tidy, so, and also, I'd like to say that when I was, I used to live at, off of Electric Dam Road, just about three or four miles from this location, and for 12 years, I had these garbage trucks parked at my house and had, they were about 100 feet from my front door, and my wife's standing in the, or sitting in the back, and she can tell you that she would not have tolerated odors. And we had neighbors at the time that, I thought some of them might be here today, but maybe they sent emails instead, but they can all tell you that they never had issues with odors at, at all. So, and we don't, you know, we don't, I don't like storing garbage, I like to take it to the dump and get rid of it. It's not good for the trucks to leave a bunch of garbage on them.
Any questions from the Board of Commissioners to the applicant?
Mr. Lawrence, you made a statement you'd be in and out of there, possibly two times a day. For what reason would you come in two times a day?
Well, I drive my personal vehicle in to get in the garbage truck and leave and go pick up the garbage, and then, that's one. And then we'll come back in the evening to put the truck back and get my personal truck to go home. That's two.
Okay, and you made mention of an air compressor, that would mean you'd have to have power in there, is that correct?
Well, if I, if I can, I like to have an air compressor in case I get there and there's a flat tire, yeah. there's a flat tire, yeah. If, I mean, if possible, that would be great. One step at a time, is what I was.
I was curious, because you were saying, I'm parking the trucks, I'm building a fence, storing garbage cans, various things, and then it came up you needed an air compressor. That would mean you'd have to have some form of power in there?
Preferably, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And water as well, to, you know, wash the truck or something, wash your hands.
Yeah, Mr. Lawrence, and I might direct this actually towards George DOT. That road is a very narrow road, and I know they just paved it this wide, but it's still very narrow. I have some concern about that, the trucks going through there and a car coming, and I've seen some cars go pretty fast on that road. But also, trying to get out at that intersection, that's horrible. And I don't know George if that's been addressed, if it's, you know, it's right close to the other intersection in traffic light, and so you can't put a traffic light there, correct?
Correct. You're, you're kind of hemmed in with the existing traffic control devices as it is. And yes, Chester Harris is a narrow road through there. I think it's about fifteen feet wide.
Have y'all addressed, have y'all addressed that concern about the trucks maybe getting out on the, on the, pulling out?
Not specifically for this, for this particular land use. You know, you were able to turn left and right from Dallas Akworth onto Chester Harris. Again, it's not optimal, because you don't have a turn, you don't have a left turn lane going into Chester Harris, so, not specifically for this land use, but we do know of the existing, you know, traffic geometrics out here and understand what's going on.
So we, if I could, we pick up some garbage down Chester Harris Drive already, so our trucks are going in and out, and I'm familiar with that issue. What we do is, we're not trying to sound sassy, I guess, but we just wait. We just wait until we have an opening in traffic. As far as coming in, going out, there's a little hump right before the driveway, but we can see from our trucks, you know, if you're in a truck, you can see a long ways down the road, either direction, from coming in or going out from that driveway.
Well, I know the question from Mr. Colette to Mr. Jones of the DOT is more in line with operations of roadway. That was the intent of asking, as to whether or not this would severely or negatively impact traffic operations on a road that is already very, very narrow, even after widening and paving, and also at the location that it intersects with Dallas Akworth. It is a, not only congested by traffic, but also congested by other entry points along Dallas Akworth at that point. You've got Bobo Road coming in, you've got East Paulding coming in, you've got Old Cartersville Road coming in. Very familiar with the location, and I've been down Chester Harris a number of times, even recently with, because of this application. So, that was, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that was your, gist of your concern was operations of traffic flow, correct? All right. And as far as you getting into and out of it, yes, I'm sure that you can, but it doesn't mean that it's any less dangerous than it already is. Any other questions from Board, Mr. Davis?
Clarification, now, with the mic. Will, you don't ever have any garbage there overnight, right? You always take it to the land?
That's, that's our intention to always take it to the landfill. Sometimes the landfill, we don't get finished before the landfill closes. I mean, any company, I mean, we, we work until we're done. We pick up our routes, and, not going to lie, we try to have the most, the minimal amount of garbage on our trucks when we get done. At the end of the day, we always try to get to the landfill. The landfill is open till four thirty, but they don't let commercial trash come in after four o'clock, so we always try to go to the landfill, or we always go to the landfill as close to four o'clock as possible. So, there may be garbage on the truck overnight.
Yeah, there's no indication you live there, so you don't live over this property?
No, sir.
Mr. Davis?
So, my question regarding Chester Harris specifically. I've received a number of emails from citizens asking about Chester Harris. On that end, where it's at Nuvo, Chester Harris comes out there behind Domino's, and it's not great getting in and out of that road. I've done it a number of times myself. There was a lot of concern, and it may be some of the concern from some folks who are here today, is about the other end of Chester Harris, where it's, on this end, it's a very narrow road, and it goes through a very non-subdivision area, and then it turns, and then it backs up right into the middle of the main, main drive, main drive of the subdivision. Is there any, have we had any discussion, or can we have discussion, on, on the way you come in and out? I don't want to say limit you to only coming in and out one way, because you may have customers over there, or something like that, but I don't know. That may be a DOT question, it might be planning zoning question, but can we have that discussion to understand if the, if the impact to Chester Harris is between Dallas Akworth Highway and the property, it might, might be a little different for some folks that live in that subdivision that comes out of Old Cartersville.
I can defer that to Mr. Jones, if you like.
The DOT, let me go back in time. In two thousand five, there was a VOC meeting, and they approved closing Chester Harris Road. At that point in time, it hasn't gone through, obviously. We're working on that now, trying to design a cul-de-sac south of the Chestnut Hills subdivision. So, eventually, that will come online and take out that option.
That would likely be the only feasible way you could control entry points of trucks coming into whichever end of Chester Harris. Problem is, is that if you have any residence between that segment that you wish to avoid seeing truck traffic, if they have garbage disposal service, you're still going to have trucks entering that location in order to service them. So I don't know if there's any meaningful way to police that, and certainly not by this body, but it would have to be either policymaking body, such as yourselves with the Board of Commissioners, working in conjunction with the DOT to try to affect that. I think, and I'm very open to being wrong.
Yes, sir, I was just trying to make sure that the concerns that were from the citizens that had contacted me have been heard.
Are voiced. I understand.
So, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I can say that I have, I have had this discussion with citizens in Chestnut Grove subdivision, and I think one of the big concerns with those people that was that we would be coming through there, getting in and out. And we've assured those people that it's not, it's not our intention to go down Chester Harris and come out on the Chestnut Grove side. It's longer, it's a farther distance. It takes longer to go that way. Like I said before, we do have some customers on Chester Harris, and we have some customers in Chestnut Grove community. At this time, the way we've been serving those people is, we've served the ones in Chestnut Grove community by turning in at Chestnut Grove, and the ones on Chester Harris by turning in at Chester Harris. And we don't really have any intention to change that, because, I mean, unless we get more customers down Chester Harris Drive, which is likely, it, it just is longer to go that way. But as far as getting in and out, and also, I just thought of something, probably should keep my mouth shut, but there's a, there's a road, the one-way road, that comes between the battery store and the graveyard off of Chester Harris, and it comes out right there on the Old Cartersville Road. And you can't come in that way, because it's a one-way going from Chester Harris to Old Cartersville, but it would be very easy to pull out that way and turn, turn right on to Old Cartersville, and you're right there at the red light. And I don't know if that's a bad idea, or, you know, if it's something that nobody wants me to do, or whatever, but we could do that, and that would make coming out, coming in's not a hard thing. Turning into Chester Harris is real easy. Coming out, sometimes you've got to sit there for a few minutes before you get an opening, but if we turn down that little road right there, that would make exiting super easy. I don't know if anybody may have, I don't know, that might be a private piece of road. I have no idea what the deal with that is.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, we're going to give back two questions driving the discussion at this point. Is there any other questions from Board of Commissioners? Mr. Crowe?
Mr. Lawrence, have you ever been through that road and tried to make a right turn onto Old Cartersville?
Not in a garbage truck, but I have in a personal truck. Just, I was sitting there on Old Cartersville and saw somebody coming that way, and I was like, hey, where's that come from? So I drove around and found, and it's pretty narrow. It's not something you want to take a tractor trailer through.
Well, it's narrow, and once you get to Old Cartersville to make that right-hand turn you're talking about, pretty tight, even in a regular vehicle.
Okay, well, I mean, I.
You might want to revisit that idea.
Yeah, well, I just thought I'd bring it up. It's something that, that I could definitely take a look at. I haven't looked at it, you know, through these lenses.
I understand, sure.
All right. Are there any other questions from Planning Commission to the applicant before we move on?
I'd like to ask the Water Department Representative if, is Chester Harris served by county water? I didn't notice it when I was going down through there. I didn't notice any hydrants. And I know the bracket, Mobile Home Park, at one time was on well, so I didn't, I'm not sure if that road is even on water. We were talking about this hydrant. Are you familiar with it?
I'm not. I have not looked at GIS, what we have in our mapping system at this, at this location, but somebody else may know if there's hydrants out there. I haven't seen it.
There's Q fire hydrants and water lines.
There, there is water on that road, Scott, because I know there.
Yeah, I know, when we did the roadwork out there, we counted some of that, so there are fire hydrants and water lines, I don't know what size, so.
Okay. I didn't see any at all when I was looking at those, so. And that house that is to the right of your property is being remodeled, is that not part of your property, is that?
No, sir, that's. That's here?
Yes, actually in that curve right there.
Is here? And it comes.
No, no.
One more. What? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, right beside your green line.
The house you just asked about is here?
Yes.
And, of course, this property line's here. There's a little wellhouse right on the edge of that, I guess a wellhouse, little green brick building right about here.
Okay.
About two feet from the property line.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Joey, I've got another question.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see where it was coming from.
Mr. Waggit made me think of another question. Do you ever wash out the back of those garbage trucks?
We generally do that at the landfill, so that we don't have, you know, goo.
Yeah, so you would not do it at that property, correct?
No.
Okay, and that maybe needs to be a stipulation that you would not, because I think if you do, we probably have another set of concerns we have to worry about.
Yeah, nobody wants that. Include me, I don't want that. I don't like smelling garbage either. I don't, I know there's a rumor.
Any other questions for the applicant? Board of Commissioners, Planning Commission? Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify one thing, because we, we went back and revisited the rezoning in two thousand six, and the reason I mentioned the stipulations, that, that was a B1 zoning with a lot of permitted uses that was possible for the site. That's why there were a lot more road improvement type setup and requirement in that back then. This one right here on stipulation number, number one, that staff has recommended if this gets approved, is that it is only this business that would be allowed there, and that if there were any kind of new businesses, or changes, or anything like that, it had to go back through this zoning process. That prohibits any kind of other B2 uses, or any B1 uses out there. And then it's very limited with the three trucks. Just wanted to make a, clarify that.
Thank you. You may take your seat, Mr. Lawrence. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? If you would sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. There's about seven minutes remaining in time to speak on behalf, just so you know.
Sure, I'll be very brief. My name is Angela Holland, and I just wanted to speak in favor of Clayton Sanitation. I know Will's been a good business owner in our community, and we appreciate all that he's done. And I have been to their house many, many times, and never smelled garbage, never seen him clean the garbage truck. And, you know, as far as that goes, his, his wife has been very particular about that sort of thing, too, as any wife would, and just wanted to say that I do believe that Will would be a good neighbor, even with the stipulations that that land becomes unsellable in the future.
Where do you live, Ms. Holland?
Forty-four fifty-nine Buckcannon Highway.
I don't personally know Mr. Lawrence, however, he is my garbage man, and he's wonderful. He's a great asset to our community. We've had to suffer through the larger companies who don't even answer their phone, let alone give any personal service. Our garbage is always picked up. If we forget to put it on the curb, they come and get it. If we have extra bags, they pick it up. They always answer their phone, they always return their messages. They're very accessible, and I appreciate being able to support small business. If they are not allowed to park their two rather small garbage trucks on this land, they're going to have to close their business down, and that will put yet another small business out of Paulding County, and that's why I'm speaking on their behalf today.
I'm Linda Lawrence. I am Will's mother. I want you to know that Will picks up garbage for twelve different churches in the area. He's never charged them one dime. He is important business owner in this area. He looks out for things in the community. He prays over his customers. I appreciate if you would approve this permit.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
My name is Jennifer Emery. I am also a customer of Clayton Sanitation and have been for several years now. I also, just like the other lady, switched from a very big-name company that I could never get on the phone. They raise their prices every three months because, oh, the gas in their trucks went up. They've never raised their prices only once, and they haven't raised their prices in the past twelve years. They've been in business as far as I've, as far as I've been seeing. And I did know about the churches that he doesn't charge them, and even though he picks up their garbage, I feel like that's a very good person to have in your community, and a good small business that actually does those values and is good with customers and everything like that. They, again, I second that they answer the phone every single time you call, they get back to your messages within ten minutes if you're sending it. If they have any, if you have any concerns or anything like that, they are always willing to work with you, no matter what, on whatever you need as a customer. They're one of the best small businesses I've ever had the, the privilege to actually use, and the fact that, that they might lose their business over this one small issue is just heartbreaking. And I really hope that the county approves this, because, again, like the other lady said, losing another small business in this county is just terrible, and I don't understand why it's so difficult to run a small business here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandra Freeman. I live on Cartersville Highway. When Will was not allowed to put his trucks on the property that he purchased, which he asked about the zoning before he ever purchased, anyway, he had to have an emergency place to park his trucks, and he had, they were parked in my yard, about fifty foot from my front door, and I will tell you, my personal garbage can smelled worse than any of his trucks. I also have allowed him to put a few of his trash cans on my property till this is resolved. They're all brand new, they've never had garbage in them. They smell like plastic from the factory, and that's all I wanted to let y'all know.
My name is Florian Mishok. I reside on 416 Cannon Trail, Dallas, Georgia 30157. I am here in support of Mr. Lawrence's application, simply because he is not only a business owner, but also a member of our community. It is paramount for us to sustain and to support him in his quest to promote his business, as far as he has helped all of us to reduce the cost of garbage disposal. Let's remember the fact that what business was a BL, BLD that sold to American Waste Industries. American Waste Industries has a headquarters in New Jersey, if I'm not correct, if I'm correct on about that. I don't want to support New Jersey. I want to support Paulding County. That's where it's supposed to go. Thank you.
Please, no more outbursts during the meeting. I do appreciate everybody that came forward that wished to speak on behalf of the application, and I have no doubts that the gentleman is a good man. We do have to go forward with the rest of this meeting, which at this point, there's no one else to speak on behalf of the application. I would like to ask anybody that may have questions, comments, or concerns, or may wish to speak in opposition to the application, to come forward. You will sign in, state your name, and you will address your comments to the chair.
Hello, my name is Donna Culvert. I live at 440 Chester Harris Drive. And I actually wrote what I was going to say and typed it out, so I don't waste your time, so.
That's all right.
I just want to thank you so much for hearing our concerns. As you all know, Clayton Sanitation purchased a piece of property for his business on Chester Harris Drive. He bought it knowing what kind of zoning it had. He came out to the property, started clearing it, and the neighbors asked him, what are you going to put here? He told them he was going to park a truck here, a garbage truck. Soon he placed a bunch of smelly garbage cans. And yes, a complaint was filed. He started by telling people he only wanted to park a garbage truck. And then it turned into two, maybe three. And now I understand possibly four. Along with these, he wants to put cans, he wants to wash them there. He wants to run his business there. It just keeps growing. Garbage cans and garbage trucks stink. Yet he wants to put these trucks just a few feet from his neighbors. This is not a small businessman who's been mistreated. We're not trying to put him out of business. As the owner of this business, he was responsible for making sure that he purchased a piece of property that fits the needs of his company. This land is on a hill, and he has no way of controlling the water running down from his property. And there is no way he can keep this house, the household chemicals and oils and paints and whatever gross smelling stuff comes from a garbage truck from being in that water. It will wash down into the creek and pond. The liability factor alone should make him run from here. It is, is this really the type of problem everyone wants to deal with? The Paulding DOT already posted a road on the sign that states it's unsafe for big trucks to travel, because the road's so narrow. Will the county fix this road and widen it at the taxpayers' expense? Will Mr. Lawrence be required to widen the road? If he does not fix the road before he comes here, what liability will he have? What liability will the county have? Will he, will the county get the state to rework the intersection at 381 and Chester Harris? Are we going to hope nothing happens there? Do we just allow a hazardous, foul-smelling company to move on a small plot of land in the middle of a neighborhood? Or do we have the responsibility to the people in this neighborhood to keep them safe, too? The owner of Domino's, and you should have a copy of his email, stated that he would have moved his business instead of remodeling it, had he known it. The barber shop, the computer store, salon, and clothing store all believe this will impact their businesses in a negative way. Do we want to run the businesses off? We know that your research you have, has shown us, has shown that there would be adverse effects on the usability of adjacent or nearby property, and that it may result in excessive or burdensome use of streets, transportation facilities, utilities, and other public services. Without a doubt, this will be costly in one way or another. There is no compromise with a really bad situation. Please, as hard as it may be, what Clayton Sanitation really needs is for you as a board to save him any more hard lessons and deny this zoning. Please just stop this all now. Let Clayton Sanitation find a place that's suitable for his company. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Hi, my name's Chris Earnhardt. Um-
I'm sorry, would you repeat that last part?
Chris Earnhardt.
Earnhardt, thank you.
Yes, sir. I live, where are we? And first, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to come here and speak, to be heard, and for my concerns to be considered. I know there's been a lot of discussion and debate on social media regarding this issue. I don't participate in any of that. I have no social media platforms. So I appreciate the opportunity to come here, have my voice heard, and, and to get the truth of what's going on with this piece of property and, and how it will impact the surrounding community. I want to be clear, I'm not against small business, community development, community growth. I encourage small business. I've worked for several, got several in my family. And this is nothing against Mr. Lawrence. This is about how approving a B2 spot zoning in the midst, in the middle of a residential area will impact that community immediately surrounding the property, including me personally, the value of my property, as well as the surrounding properties, the safety of those who travel Chester Harris Road. This is about having the, the right business at the right place, and this is not the right place for this business. My property is downhill, as you can see, um, from the parking area that's proposed. So any rain, washout of garbage trucks, garbage cans will flow to my property. Again, it's not the right place for it. I own just under eight acres, and I share my south line with Mr. Lawrence's north line. My property is rectangular in shape, and I chose to build my house along my south line towards the west corner in an effort to let my kids build houses as they get older. I've got three kids, leaves three open corners. That was the plan. Um, the rezoning will not only drive the value of my land down significantly, but effectively eliminate the possibility of building homes during the future. I've worked this land for 20 years to build sweat equity and a home for my family. I understand Mr. Lawrence has worked hard for some time to build his business and provide a service to this community. I'm asking that the value of my land, the work I've done and the equity I've built, not be impacted by the choice of someone else. I know Mr. Lawrence has invested money in this property, but I can guarantee you I've invested more in mine. I asked a realtor to research a similar situation. Her findings were that the value drop is approximately 17 plus or minus percent. She said in between 15 and 20, up to 30, but a conservative number would be 17. If it doesn't drive away interest altogether, if there's people that don't want to live around it, you're not going to get any, uh, any, any interest in it at all. So 17% is a scary number when you're talking about the last 20 years of your life. But to drive away all interest altogether, that's 100% of nothing. I would assume that the people who've shown support aren't going to be directly impacted by this rezoning. And it, it may be possible that they would have a different view of this zoning if it was literally the property next door to them. It's easy to support something from afar. From a mile away, it's easy to say, leave the guy alone. It's a small business. He's just trying to make it. But for me and many folks here today, and several that couldn't make it, this will have a major impact on our daily lives and our financial future. The border that I share is where me and my son goes. We play baseball. I'll let them go camping. And with the attraction of animals and the odor that's going to be there, I will not allow them to do that by themselves. They won't be camping out in the, out in the field anymore. I brought pictures to show, if, if anybody'd like to see that, of how my land is and how I maintain it. I also have a few pictures from Mr. Lawrence's lot, I believe the current lot and the proposed lot, to show you where my concerns are actually coming from. The lot was being used for some purposes listed in the B2 application before the proper zoning. There were trash cans, grass clippings, discarded appliances, including a freezer, a washing machine along the roadside. I have pictures of that. These items were clearly visible from the road, from Chester Harris, and were only removed when a formal complaint was filed. There are also trees that were cleared on the lot in question that were not removed, but pushed back to the back line, his north line, my south line, pushed down the hill. And I'd like to know from the folks here, what's the proper way to dispose of those trees, because now they're just pushed down the hill. The proposed six-foot privacy fence will only hide the visible and hopefully protect Mr. Lawrence's equipment. Garbage truck's more than six foot tall. So the fence is more for security of equipment rather than aesthetics to the surrounding area, and will do little to nothing to address the complaints that are here today. There's already a strong odor on the site, as noticed recently as last night, um, with the current minimum biodegradable waste that's there today. When the trash cans were stored on the site, you could smell them from the road and next door. I pulled up, rolled my window down, and I could smell them. Um, when the trash cans, uh, I'm sorry, the odor from the garbage will still attract animals and will be an annoyance for the residents and the surrounding community, and will impact the way I'm able to use my yard and my land. I called another sanitation service owner, asked for a candid conversation regarding this situation. He advised me that he empties his trucks daily and washes them out twice a month. And then he said, you still don't want to live next door to them. He stated he didn't know how the zoning would go through, and it's not a good fit for that area. Again, not the right place for this business. I asked for the application of this property to acquire B2 zoning be denied, as it will have significant negative impact on property values adjacent and in proximity to the lot in question. Furthermore, Section Zero of the 2003 Zoning Ordinance of Paulding County State's Purpose and Intent, B2 District is composed of certain lands and structures located alongside state and federal roads which require high visibility, locations accessible to major highways, and serve a, and serve significant portions of the community. It's also the intent of this district to provide areas for business to occur, which because of their intensity, some outside storage area or hours of operation may have significant impact on adjoining properties. Because of the nature of this business permitted, in the B2 district, the zoning should be limited to property frontage on major thoroughfares and/or in large commercial nodes. I believe Paulding County has these commercial nodes set up to accommodate businesses like the one we're speaking about today, and it would not have a negative impact on our residential community. Some have rental space available, available for commercial vehicles. Utilizing the existing B2 nodes would avoid the hardship and this, that this would put on our community, the environmental impact, the financial impact that we will suffer. So again, this is not the right place for this business. I thank you for your time and consideration. And I do have pictures, if anybody would like to see.
You can pass them to Mr. Stokes over here. He'll pass them down. We'll advise you, we have four minutes remaining in time to be spoken as opposition.
I'm Janine Southall, and I do also live on the road. I am extremely familiar with this area, because I've been there for 20 years. As the gentleman in front of me has said, this will adversely affect our property values. The houses that are next to this property on either side are very, very close to those property lines. So that's going to not be a good thing for any, for anybody there. That little, small, one-way road that he was talking about goes through a cemetery. It's not a public road. It is part of the cemetery, as far as I know. And again, trying to turn out of there is almost as bad as trying to turn off of Chester Harris onto the highway, trying to go from that cemetery road over to the Old Cartersville. As a matter of fact, the road is so narrow and so dangerous still that we do not permit our kids to drive when they leave the house. They do not go out that, that entrance unless they are going south. If they're going north, we make them go out through the subdivision, because it's not safe to make that turn. Adding any more traffic to this road is just not a very good idea in any way, shape, or form. It's bad enough, the buses can't even pass each other on the road. They have to wait to be off to the side to pass. And adding more runs of a garbage truck, even if it's at one end, is just going to make that situation even more dangerous. So in addition to, you know, the smells, the traffic, the fact that this road is just not set up to deal with this type of business at this point in time, you know, I'd like to request that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two minutes remaining.
Madam, gentlemen, I'm Lauren Wills, native Paulding County. Grew up at New Hope, and I still have a vital interest in our county and small businesses. I've talked to this young man, and he provides a vital business. Thank God for garbage pickup. Mine wakes me up at 6:30 every Monday morning, the guy that picks my garbage up. But I'm here to speak in opposition to this because of the cemetery, the proximity of the cemetery. I'm also have been a member of the New Hope Cemetery Committee for many years, more than I can remember. And that's the, the largest cemetery, I believe, in Paulding County. It's a very active cemetery in that they still, people buried there just on a regular basis. But in addition to that, people come from all over the United States seeking the graves of their relatives that fought in the Battle of New Hope Church in the Civil War. And they're coming there. And we, we have visitors there all the time. And we're proposing a nice permanent monument to, in memory of the Flight 242 fatalities and honor the survivors as well, right there in the corner of the cemetery, not 100 yards from this property, that will be a reality when we get the money. And those people coming in there all the time, wanting to see where their loved ones crashed or died in that horrible crash in 1977 there at New Hope. So I'm, I speak in opposition to this. I'm, if you've ever smelled, have you ever smelled a good smelling garbage truck? I never have. After mine pulls in the cul-de-sac-
Mr. Wills.
I go to retrieve-
Speak to me, please.
I, I go to retrieve my can. I can still smell, smell out there. And you have to change your clothes and everything, almost. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We are, at this point, out of time. I will ask the planning commission, is there any desire to extend time? Whatever time is extended for the opposition must also be granted to the people who would be for, speaking on behalf of the application. We have a couple of people still wishing to speak, and I'll extend that time if that's the desire of the planning commission.
I'm all right, man.
I'd have to have a motion.
I'd like to extend.
Can you give a number of minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. And I will be watching the clock.
Now, I will, I will make sure it's one minute. My name's Mike Fuller. I've stood-
I've stood, I've stood here before trying to get things zoned. In fact, I built Chestnut Grove subdivision. I'm very familiar with this area, and I own some adjacent property right next to this, which I was so happy that this area has really started to come back. I mean, it was, it has had its day, and now it's really starting to improve. People are cleaning their stuff up. The neighborhood is finally starting to really revive. And I find this to be probably one of the most, not in my backyard, if Mr. Lawrence likes these garbage trucks so much, park them next to your house. Now, he's coming into this neighborhood and trying to park his trucks, and they do smell. In fact, he's put garbage cans out there already, and they were quite odorous. You know, if there's ever been a zoning brought before this board that did not pass the smell test, this would be that zoning. This is not something that would be appropriate for this neighborhood. There's 110,000 acres in Paulding County, and I'm sure Mr. Lawrence, everybody supports small business, but he can find another spot to park these trucks in. He can rent a spot, he can find another spot. Nobody wants to put him out of business, but this is not the place or time to park these trucks here.
And how many, one other thing, how many people came here today?
Sir, direct... You'll direct your comments to me, not to the audience.
I'm sorry, sir.
That's all right, thank you.
But can people stand up to show that a lot of people came?
No, we don't need a demonstration of that at this point.
Yes, sir. My name is Lee Pos. I live on Chester Harris Drive, and I own several different parcels of land down there. We have been waiting a long time for Chester Harris to revive, and it's starting to do that. I think this is the wrong place for this business. I don't want to see the man go out of business, but there's got to be an industrial part of Paulding that he can park his trucks, not on our residential road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will close the public comment portion of, for the opposition, I will invite the applicant, Mr. Lawrence, if you would come back up. You had just about three minutes remaining from your time.
Okay. I think I can address all this in three minutes.
And then you have two more minutes that were added by the planning commission.
Okay, so five total, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So to address the concerns of Ms. Colbert, a few things. One thing you said was that knowing the zoning...
Direct your questions to me, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. One thing that was said was that knowing the zoning of this area, that I shouldn't have bought this property. And I just thought I'd mention that before I bought this piece of property, I met with a couple people who I thought would be able to answer the questions about whether I would be able to do this or not with this zoning. And it was our, it was my understanding that they thought it would be not a problem, and that this B-1 zoning would allow for what I'm trying to do here. And so I would not have bought the property if I'd have known that it was not zoned properly. And I just, I don't want to call those people out because I don't feel like that what they told me was out of malice or anything. I just feel like that I should mention that I did think that it was, that it was actually zoned for this. I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have chosen to go this route if I hadn't known that. Also, she mentioned that for, now I'm asking for four trucks, and I'm wanting to grow. Well, I am wanting to grow, but I'm willing to just park the three trucks there. I only have two right now. If they would allow three trucks to be parked there, that would be sufficient. If we need to get more trucks, we'll find other places. Several people mentioned that if this is refused, or that if I'm turned down on this, that we're going to go out of business. We'll just find another way. I just want everybody to be, you know, to rest assured that I'm not going to go down without trying to do something else. If this doesn't go through, we're going, I'm going to keep working, and that's what's required, is for success, is to work and have faith that God will handle all the rest of it, and that's what I do. Also, in reference to Ms. Colbert's concern that big trucks going up and down this road, big trucks are going to go up and down this road, period, regardless of what happens here today. And also, in reference to Mr. Earnhardt's concerns, I mentioned earlier that I thought this was zoned in an appropriate manner, and I thought that what I was doing was acceptable. And one Tuesday, I was called by a marshal to come and meet with him and speak with him about what was going on out there. I did take some garbage cans out there. I had some stuff that I was setting out because we moved from one property, and I needed to remove my stuff from that property. So I took it out here, set it out. We had plans that day for a contractor to come out and start building a privacy fence. This privacy fence that is proposed here will go around right here, and it'll be on the side of the power line closest to the road. It'll go all the way around the place, and there'll be about this distance between Mr. Earnhardt's line here and the power line. We're not planning on doing anything down there at all at this time, and so there's, that's like about, I don't know, what is that, 200 feet? 203 feet of buffer between? And I was told by the marshal to stop doing anything there, so I didn't, I moved, I removed the stuff that I had taken over there, but there's a bunch of, when I started working on that place, there was a bunch of garbage in, just in the woods. It was just real brushy woods. We had somebody come over to clean it up, and he pushed that brush down in the back, and I do intend to clean all that, all that brush up and take care of all that mess that's down there. I just haven't done anything since I was told by the marshal to stop. And so as far as, you know, I'm not trying to be a bad neighbor or ugly of the neighborhood, and this privacy fence that's proposed on this front line right here is on the highest point on the property. And from the road to the bottom of this fence is several feet high, and from there to the top of the fence, from that point, it slopes downhill. And where I propose to put the parking awnings, I don't, I may be wrong, but I don't think you'll be able to see even the awnings from the road once we get the privacy fence up. And we're going to put landscaping, of course, on the roadside of the privacy fence. So, you know, it's not going to be uglied up. In fact, it's going to look better when we're done than it has in my lifetime. Because ever since I can remember, we'd drive by there, if you could, if you could see down in those woods, I walked down in those woods before we did anything, and there was mattresses, tires, a bunch of stuff, and we cleaned a bunch of that up. And I would have continued, there's still a pile of garbage down there that needs to be removed. And, you know, I'm more than happy to get down there and finish cleaning that up. I just stopped because I was told by the marshal to stop. And so, you know. Another person said that they thought there would be more traffic because of us. I rode down Chester Harris Drive, and there's a new driveway being cut in, looks like they're building a house. I didn't see, I didn't look close enough to see if there's permits posted.
Time has expired.
Okay.
If you want to remain there for just one second, I'd like to ask the planning commission, do you have any questions for the applicant based on recent comments, both that of the opposition and those that have spoken before on behalf of? Any questions? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Earnhardt made the statement that there were...
Mr. Crowe, would you take the mic, please, so I can hear you?
Mr. Earnhardt made the statement that there were washers and dryers in there. Was that there before you got there, or did you bring those in?
I brought a washing machine in and got, it was, and a load of stuff I had. I set off for scrap metal, and that was part of the, that was what, that happened when I thought that my zoning was correct, and we were going to start a fence that, that week.
I just wanted clarification, because I know in the past, that property has accumulated some things.
There's a lot, there's a lot of trash that was there that...
Clarification question.
Thank you. That we did remove, yes, sir.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from the Board of Commissioners? And you tried to address some of the comments that were made by those that were speaking in opposition or may have questions, comments, and concerns. The trees that were pushed down, just from my understanding, was done when you thought you already had the appropriate zoning?
That's correct.
And you've done nothing further? That's what you've been referencing? You've done nothing further since the marshal told you to stop?
That is correct. We've, we, the marshal told us we needed to remove those garbage cans, and we had, you know, some, some other stuff there. And like I said, I was, we had a contractor planned on coming on, coming out there that week to start a privacy fence. And you wouldn't be able to see, you know, any of that stuff if there was a fence up. You won't be able to see a four-foot garbage fence, garbage can over top of a six-foot fence from the road.
All right. There was a question, is there any plans from the county to widen Chester Harris to make it more minimal to truck traffic? Not at this time, Jody. Okay. That was a "not at this time" if you didn't hear. All right. Any other questions from the planning commissioner, Board of Commissioners, to the applicant before I allow him to take a seat? Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Thanks, sir.
We've had comments on the stipulations that were recommended. Obviously, the recommendation from staff still reads as recommends denial, but if approved, there are 12 original stipulations with a 13th offered by Mr. Leggett to require no washouts at the property. Mr. Lawrence, if I could indulge you just one moment, do you agree to that 13th stipulation, just so that we can have it for the record, that you would be agreeable not to wash out any product, be it carts or trucks, at the property?
We can do that.
You're agreeable to that step?
I'm agreeable to that step.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I will ask the planning commission to please give me a motion with regard to Application 2018-09-Z.
Motion to approve all 13 steps.
I have a motion to approve with all 13 listed stipulations from Mr. Lowe. Is there a second? Hearing none, I'll ask again, is there a second? That motion apparently fails, so at this point, I would ask for another motion with regard to this application. I cannot make the motion.
I make a motion for denial of the application.
I have a motion to deny from Mr. Leggett. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Ms. Battle. All in favor? All opposed? Being that the case, we have a tie vote. I will cast the deciding vote. Based on conditions of the property at this time and the roadway leading to it and the recommendations of staff, I will vote in favor of the denial. This time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Mr. Leggett. A second?
A second.
I have a second from Ms. Battle. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. Thank you very much.